All right, I'm just leaving it on the air then.
All right.
Give it to Joe.
Yeah.
All right, we might as well get started. We'll wait for... Do we have enough to get started?
Yeah, we have four.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, wait, is this... Are we four quorum or five quorum?
We're, uh, we're four.
That's what I thought.
Seven.
Fine, so we can get started, okay.
Yep.
I assume Gary's...
We can heat up in here, it's a little chilly.
Yeah, right.
I said I learned my lesson. I'm like, I go with the thin.
Yeah. All right. I hereby call the regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for Long Hill Township to order at 7:33. Called order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinels and Courier News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate, judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance. You get the honor.
Please. Are we ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready. Roll call.
Why, yes. Mr. Romaronio is excused tonight. Mr. Gianakis is currently absent. Mr. Grosskopf?
Present.
Mr. Hain is excused tonight. Mr. Rosenberg is excused tonight. Mr. Lindeman?
Present.
Ms. Brennan?
Present.
Vice Chairman Johnson is excused tonight. Chairman Correct?
Present.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Now, we have resolutions. We have the resolution for Gorang and Vainida Patel, application number 22-02Z, 00 Oaks Road Extension, Omar and... Oh, no, that's the other one, I'm sorry. Twenty... The Patel one is... Did everybody have a chance to look at it?
They moved me? Yes. Sorry I'm late.
Oh, that's okay. We just started.
And record will show that Mr. Gianakis is here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the only two people that can't vote on it are Romario and Brennan. Okay, so everybody else that's here can vote on it. Did anybody have any changes, corrections, anything to say about it? If not, do I hear motion to move the Patel resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
No.
Oh, well, vote call, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now, we get to the 00 Oaks Road Extension, Omar and Anis Elisa, application 19-10Z. And this one was block 12402 lot 8.
Same people.
Same people. All righty. So everyone here can vote on it. Anybody have any changes, corrections, or comments on it? Okay. Do I hear motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty, we got those taken care of. Now, we have... Let's do the... Now, we have... Don't we have the...
Well, you passed... You did the resolutions before the meeting minutes.
No. Oh, right, I did. Okay, now we have the meeting minutes, right. Okay, I saw, I am... All right. How many meeting minutes do we have? Oh, just one. All right, the June 21st, 2022, meeting minutes. The only one excused was Jerry Romario, so everybody else here is good. Anybody have any comments or corrections for the meeting minutes? No? Do I hear motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, don't we have to approve his contract?
Uh, we can do that now, I mean, do we?
No, let's do it now.
Okay.
Let's get it over with.
Sure.
Uh, where is it on the thing here?
It's, uh, it's under old and new business.
Oh, yeah, let's get that done.
But we can do it now.
Yeah. Where is it, anyway? Did you...
Uh, I think I took your copy.
Oh, you took my copy, that's okay. All right, he has a copy for me, okay. Everybody saw the appointment of the board attorney. It's the same, same old face, new law firm.
He looks a lot like the guy who came before him.
Yeah, 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 amazing. Uh, but he's sharing the title with a lot more people. Savo, Shlock, what do you... Shlock? Corsini, Warner, Gillespie, Gillespie, and how'd the Irish guy get in there?
O'Grady.
O'Grady. And Fisher. Okay. Wow, that's a... That must be a long piece of paper. Um, so, does anybody have any questions or comments about the appointment of the board attorney? He's basically just changing the firm name. It's the same person, but we had the same issue a while back with engineers and with... We had it a couple times with Yolanda.
It happens.
Yeah. Move on to bigger and better things.
I was only there for 30 years.
Yeah. Wow.
I'm glad you took Susan with you. Keep it.
And I'm only 41, so...
Right, wow. You're a child prodigy. Um, all right, now, do I hear motion to approve said application appointment of the board attorney?
So moved.
Second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, do we need a roll call on that?
We should.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Chairman Correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great. Now, we can get on to the main attraction.
Yes.
The application is a bulk variance for block 13803, lot 19, zone R3, known as 46 Preston Drive, application number 22-05Z.
Come on down.
Andrew Hart. Applicant proposes to construct in addition to a single-family resident. The applicants can come sit at the table here.
If only you could... If you can limbo the...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the strap... Well, there's no... Oh, yeah, I forgot, the straps are up, yeah.
Oh, yeah, let me take them.
Yeah, you have to take those straps down. We don't have any...
I don't suspect any issues.
No.
We won't have to call the bailiff.
All right, thank you. Would you introduce yourselves?
Anna Hart.
Good evening. Andrew, Andrew Hart, Anna Hart from 46 Preston Drive, Gillette.
Okay, you are the owners of the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sure, and I'll swear in your professional as well as...
As our professional.
Our professionals, Ms. Nello.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, would you pull the microphones as close to you as possible so we can hear you? And would you give the... Yeah, you're preparing that. Yeah, hold on.
We have another microphone coming.
Yeah, we have a special mic for you, Ann Hill.
Thank you.
You can set up your easel if you want.
Okay, sure, I'll do that.
But after you get sworn in.
Okay, sworn in first, okay.
Please raise your right hand, all of you. Do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, while he's setting up his easel perhaps, I did have an opportunity to review the content of the notice, found it to be sufficient, found it to be timely served. It was served... Excuse me, it was published on June 23rd. We do have an affidavit saying that it was certified mailed at least 10 days prior to this evening. I see the applicants shaking their head in the affirmative since they've been sworn in. Can you testify indeed that it was certified mailed at least 10 days in advance of tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Would you happen to recall the particular date on which it was certified mailed? It's not critical if you don't?
I want to say the 15th.
Of last year.
Do you want me to go grab the file?
That's okay, that's okay. I had the affidavit, I didn't have the green cards, but that's sufficient. The affidavit is sufficient, so it was timely served and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application this evening.
Could I impose upon your expert, the easel that you've got there, instead of facing it directly, could us angle it a little to the right so the people in the audience can see it too when we're looking at it? And we can still see it at that angle.
That's right.
No, no, the other way. Move it, move it.
Maybe this?
No, no, no. Move it over there and then angle it this way. There you go. See, now they can see it too.
If you guys want to see it, you can kind of come around this way.
I think they can see it.
If you need to see it.
They can see a lot better than if we just...
You want to believe that?
Yeah, there you go. But at least they have an opportunity to see it. Okay. Very good, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, now, we have looked at your information that you've supplied, and I understand you have some additional color photographs that you're putting into evidence?
Yes, we do.
You have them, okay.
Yes, I have them, yes.
Uh, would you like to just give us a brief opening as to the reason for this application and what you're doing with the property? And just run us through a... Just an overview of it. You, yes.
Okay. So, we have a single-family home, we have three children, so it's a two-bedroom, and they're getting older. They're 13, 11, and seven, all girls, and they need their own rooms about this point. So, we were prolonging this, and then it just came at bad timing. So now we finally pulled the trigger, now we want to add a second floor over the existing house on the frame.
Over the existing footprint?
Over the existing footprint.
So it's a one-story house now?
One-story ranch.
Okay. Um, and you're adding the three bedrooms upstairs or a four bedroom?
Four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms, okay. What are you turning the bedroom in downstairs? What's going to be downstairs then?
It's going to be the kitchen, living room, dining room, and an office, and the two bathrooms.
Okay. Um, and obviously, you've looked at other options. You can't go anywhere besides up, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, all right. What witnesses would you like to offer to the board?
Our architect.
Our architect?
Yeah, he's your architect, okay.
And if you could give us your name and address, business address is fine for the record?
Uh, yeah. Jose Gennaro, G E N N A R O. I'm a registered architect and planner in the state of New Jersey, and I'm at 193 New York Avenue in Newark, New Jersey.
And how long you been licensed?
I've been licensed about... Since 87, 1987, so...
And your license is current?
Yes, it is.
And how many boards have you testified before?
Several boards, such as Union, Westfield, Newark, Hillside, to mention a few, Harrison, so...
Is this your own business?
Uh, yes, it is, yes.
Uh, just you or...
It's just me, we're employee, yes.
All right, we deem you qualified. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Um, all right, would you like him to proceed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Now, what I have here, the material that I have is photos. I have the revised plans.
Okay.
I have 10 copies of the revised plans, 11 by 17, and I have responses to Samantha and Ella's letter.
Fine, you can hand them out.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Gennaro, if you could call out what you're handing out first, so we can label them as they get handed out.
Yeah, each individual thing we have to label.
Yes.
Let's start with the drawings, revised...
So we're going to label that A1.
And the revised drawings, last revised date is?
7/1/22.
7/1/22, thank you.
Then I have the letter responding to the items. That's also dated in the letter.
Right.
So, then I have photos that were taken in August on July 1st, 2020.
Photos, mark as A3.
Uh, yes, four photos.
And you took them?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and are they an accurate depiction of what presently exists or at least a few days ago?
Samantha, do you need a copy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did, you did. You did, okay. So, the group of photos is A4, right?
A3.
A3?
Uh, yeah, four photos, A3.
Yeah, four photos, A3.
Okay, A3, I'm sorry, I thought we had... All right. Okay, where would you like to start?
Can I take the mic over there?
Sure, yeah, that's why it's portable.
It might die on you, though. Just...
No, those are fresh batteries.
We should be good. Batteries are, we're good. We're in.
Okay, so when we first looked at this house, as it was mentioned, it's a very small house, about 1,400 square feet, two bedrooms, dining area, a living room, and a kitchen. Two ba... One bathroom is very small, and then there's a second full bathroom. And then there's a porch that is really not usable. It's an enclosed porch in the front that it's not usable. So, we looked at different... And then there's a one-car attached garage. We looked at different options, we went back and forth, but based on the site restrictions and the way the house is sitting on the lot, we felt that the second level was the best option to gain the additional bedrooms that are so much needed for my client. So, on the first floor, what we did is we eliminated one of the bedrooms and we made a bigger dining area. And also in that area, we added the stair to the second floor in a two-story foyer, open foyer. On the porch, we made it part of the living room, which we're calling a great room, so we... They have a bigger area there. And then we expanded the kitchen by getting rid of one of the full baths, and we ended up with a powder room and a full bath, a little larger than the other one, with a study in there. So, that was the... The garage remains the way it is. On the second floor, we gained about 1,500 square feet. We have four bedrooms. We have a master bedroom with a good-sized master walk-in closet, master bath, and then we have three additional bedrooms with a full bath. And we also have a laundry closet in there. As far as... We also have a basement, as shown on sheet P2 of 3, and that remains the same. The only thing we did there is we moved the location of the stair, because it's the new stair to the basement that will be under the stair going up to the second floor. So, that... Not much changed there. In the front, we added a porch, just for... Just to have a porch in the front for aesthetic reasons, and, you know, it works well with our design, so that's... And that is one of the... The only part that we added impervious coverage on for that extra porch with steps coming The exterior, we're using... We're going to keep as much brick as... Existing brick as we can, and the rest is going to be all fiber cement siding. The roof will be fiberglass shingles, as selected by my client. And as far as the design, that's it. You know, I mean, if you have questions, that's what we're trying to... Trying to give him the space that he's looking for. Plenty of closet space, the extra bathrooms, so...
Now, the porch was added to give it an aesthetic?
Yes, yes. Also, like, just to have something before we come into the entrance, to have a cover area. We also added, I forgot to say, we are adding about 22 square feet to the front of the house just to create that foyer and, you know, to bring the entrance out a little bit, you know? Yeah. And, you know, I don't know if you want me to talk about the variances of why we're here for?
Sure, yeah.
One... Two are pre-existed. The lot area, we have an undersized lot that requires 30,000 square feet. We have 13,302, so that's already a problem that we have. And then the width is supposed to be 150, and we have 100. So, the variances that we're asking for are... Now, what's unique in this lot is that we have two fronts. I thought one was the rear yard, but I learned later that it's two fronts. So, the south, I call it the south side, we're okay with that setback, we comply, but in the north side, we have presently 21 feet point two. We are reducing it by about a foot and a half because we're doing an overhang, and that's also two reasons for that. There's aesthetics in the back of the building, because I still see that as being the back, and also it gives us a better... Square footage, a better shaped room on the second floor. So, we are reducing that one by about a foot and a half. And the other variance that we have, one of the other ones, is the lot coverage, which we are already exceeding. We're at 20% maximum, we're at 28.29, and we are adding about a 1 and 1/2 percent, we're at 29.51. We're adding roughly about 160 square feet impervious. In the original drawing, we have a walkway that was coming, going, connecting to Preston Drive on the south side. After speaking to my clients, we decided to eliminate that.
Okay.
So, the way...
So, what is the square footage that you're wanting up with?
With the increase and the...
Yeah.
Yes, about 161 square feet, with roughly about a little bit over 1%.
So, but what is the ultimate percentage of square feet, of lot coverage? Repeat that, I didn't...
That... Yeah, okay, so the max is 20, we are existing at 28.29, and we are proposing 29.51.
Okay, so that's a little different then, okay, because you eliminated the walkway.
Yes, it was higher, right. It was higher before, a little higher, yeah, yeah. And, you know, and we have... What I have here, I don't know if you want me to introduce this, it's just the plot plan, but I put some coloring in it, just to show that...
Mark that A4.
A4, okay. And that was just to show that the green area is the only thing that we're increasing here. The orange, the pink is the pavers. It's a side patio that they have, because that's the usable area of the lot. The orange is the asphalt driveway area, and then walking out the basement, there's already an area, paved area, so the porch is over that. So, the entire porch is not counting, it's just part of that, because we already had that. So, and other than that, you know, that... The way it's going to work is we're going to come down from the front, do a landing, and then come down again to the left to get down to this level area coming out of the basement.
Sir, sorry. You said the existing lot coverage is 28 point something, but on the application and the...
Planner's report.
Planner's report, thank you. We have 29.45, so do you know...
Due to the elimination of the walkway or...
Yeah, yeah, with the existing, though, should have been the same. I don't know, but we recalculated everything after the report, you know, I went back to the site and, you know, I made sure that I had all the numbers. So, this should be the final one, you know, what we're showing now, yeah.
Just a slight difference.
Yeah, we're slightly off. I think it has to do with the walkway, but also with the way I counted the porch over the paved area, you know, I mean, there was something there.
So, you were counting it twice maybe?
Yeah, probably counted twice, yeah. That's what happened, but upon, you know... And I also included in the drawings now a lot coverage calculation, so you can see I listed every element and how I got to that number, you know?
Okay.
So, and also, I added, one of the things that was brought up in the report was the building height. I did a calculation for that, you know, so you can see that we're under the 35 feet, you know, we're... Ended up a little higher, too. That was 33, and now we have 33 eight and eight inches, you know, but... And I know that because the lowest point in this property, and it's the only spot, is where you walk out of the basement. Everything else is lower than that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we just, with the benefit of our board engineer, Ms. Nello, can we just see if we could confirm the magnitude of the deviations?
Yeah, that's my next...
That was my next step. We sit next to each other and we think alike.
Now, another thing I didn't mention was the critical area. I wasn't aware of that, and then... So, I kind of did something, I added on the plot plan, the areas, and it seems like the only critical area, and you'll see it from the photo, it's by the porch, by the existing porch, there's a big drop there, but after... But we don't have the 50-foot setback, that's the thing. That's where we're missing the 50-foot. But coming out of the basement, we have an area about 25 feet out that it's pretty level, and then the slope is gradual, it's not that steep on that side.
Maybe now would be a good time, Mr. Chairman, for Ms. Nello to...
Yeah, sure.
We have an impervious coverage because the number changed a bit. Does it look as if it's the 29.51% proposed is accurate?
Yes, absolutely. One of the comments in my original report was to provide a breakdown, and I think that this... The breakdown that the architect has provided is very helpful in that you could see kind of, you know, what numbers are increasing, which are decreasing, and which are remaining the same. You know, personally, I find that having this table is always the most accurate way to get to that final number, so we can kind of see if something got missed or anything, But from what I've reviewed on the revised plan, because I was given the benefit of having this earlier today, is, you know, everything looks like it's accounted for there. So I would agree that the existing lot coverage is the 28.29 percent, and then the proposed is 29.51 percent. And I calculated that as an increase of 162.87 square feet, which, you know, in the grand scheme of the size of the lot is rather de minimis as an increase. But again, they're over the 20 percent to begin with, so even adding one square foot, you know, triggers the need for variance relief. You know, to the second point, I did have a question because I was concerned, as this board knows, with how, you know, Long Hill defines building height. As soon as I saw a walkout basement, I said, "We need to know exactly what the building height is." Because even though it's only that small piece, and you can see, it's great in that view he has there, because you could really see that it's only right where you walk out that front door. But, you know, fortunately for the applicants, this isn't a variance request. You could see in the building height calculations, a nice breakdown of all the floor heights and dimensions. So it's 33 feet, eight and a half inches. It's under the 35 feet. No variance would be required for that. Finally, as discussed, and this was another point that I had originally brought up in the letter, in my first review letter, was that the front yard of the property is rather steep. There's some sections that are steeper than others, but majority of, as the architect stated, once you get 25 feet off that one corner, it's pretty much the whole lot's over 15 percent. So any change to this house would be a change to your setbacks, to your critical area where your slope is greater than 15 percent. So what we have here is the existing house, what he described as the existing screened porch area, which is now being widened to be part of the living room. That's existing 14 feet away from the top of the steep slope area, where that should be 50 feet. So that's a pre-existing non-conformity. And then the addition for the porch is 19 feet, four inches from the top of the steeply sloped area, kind of a little bit further, where it starts a little bit further off the house.
So the proposed, so the deviation would be the 19 feet, four inches versus 50 feet required, notwithstanding the fact that the existing is an even greater deviation?
Correct. That is correct. Yep.
So that's our second variance. And then there's a front yard setback, north side?
Yes, the north side.
Yes.
Are his numbers accurate on that one, 19 point?
Yes, that is what we had as well. And Liz's report states this as well, that the existing front yard to what would be viewed as the rear yard of their house, if you look at it in street view or take a ride by, it's where they pull in, it's the back of the house. It's existing 21.2 feet, where 30 is existing, so it's a pre-existing non-conformity. And then they're reducing that to 19 feet, 19.62 feet. And the architect could just clarify for me. That is only for a small portion, is that correct?
Only a small portion, and then the second level only. Not in the footprint.
So it's not even on the ground level?
No, no. It's only an overhang. It's an overhang, yeah.
It's a small area that's bumped out of the rear.
I can tell you how much that is too. How wide that is.
Your what?
My daughter's closet.
Are you?
That's for about 16 feet four. 16 feet four.
Yep.
Yeah.
So just 16 feet wide, you have that one and a half foot bump out.
On the second floor.
And again, I know you described it as, you know, get a room of a good size up there, but also, I assume, so the back rear of that house isn't completely flat, is that correct?
Right, right. Yeah, just to break it up a little bit, yes.
Amassing and things.
Yeah.
Exactly, so, okay.
Great.
Yeah, and I mean, to be honest, you've touched on most of the concerns that I had brought up in my letter. He did give an itemized response, which, you know, I truly appreciate. I think it helps clarify some questions we had. Originally, they were proposing a walkway in the front, which kind of brought up a lot of issues, because as I described, it's a steeply sloped area.
Right.
I said, you know, this is going to involve stairs, maybe some small retaining walls. In speaking both with the homeowner and their architect last week, they said they didn't really need it, so they were going to forego that walkway.
Let them sting the shovel.
And all those things that would come along with it. So I think we've really kind of simplified the application without that, and also reduced the impervious coverage variance they were asking for by probably about 300 square feet or so, so.
With that said, and those are inputted from our engineer, board members have questions of their expert or our engineer?
No? Okay.
Just of our engineer?
Yeah.
Samantha?
Yeah.
The basement walkout?
Yep.
That won't constitute a third story, correct?
No, no.
And I didn't think so, but I know that-
Always good to ask. No, I appreciate it, so.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, but that's a small percentage of the open.
Correct. More than 50 percent of the basement walls would have to be exposed, as you could see, if you could flip back one more sheet where he shows it. I mean, you barely have 2 percent of the foundation walls of the basement exposed.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Good to get on record, yes. Definitely no concerns about it being considered a three-story. And again, that's just by how the definition defines stories as well as building height. It's a little bit more of a strict definition than you'll see in some other towns and things, so we always like to double-check those things.
All right. Any other questions from our board members of their expert or ours?
If not, Mr. Chairman, I just have one or two quick ones.
Go ahead.
If I may, the applicant was, and/or the engineer on behalf of the applicant, I'm sorry, the architect, planner, not the engineer. Did you have an opportunity to review Ms. Nello's report in its entirety? And can you stipulate to all the items that require additional work, that primarily plan revisions and compliance with grading permit requirements, copy of a survey, if still required, and the like? But with knowledge and information and understanding of what's being required, is the applicant stipulating to compliance with all those items? Should the board grant the approval? Yes?
Yes.
Is there anything in the planner's report that we have to address, or have we talked about those?
I think we touched on it.
Okay. That's what I thought, because we talked about impervious, we talked about the-
Height, critical areas, yep.
Fine. Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to double check.
Now, if I may, just one more thing I forgot to mention. I thought we needed a side yard setback originally, but we don't.
Okay.
Because of the width of the, it's an existing lot, so we're allowed to reduce it. So we're okay with the side.
And I think if I recall correctly, and actually, I cheated, I looked at it with Ms. Nello. But, so it's not recalling correctly, I just confirmed that. But I believe Ms. Laney, our planner, explained that in one of her footnotes to the table.
Yes, yes, she did.
So what you're stating, if I understand correctly, is our planner was correct in determining that you did not need a side yard setback variance for the reasons she stated on page two of her June 28 report, correct?
That is correct. That's where I learned about it, yes.
Thank you.
Terrific. All right. I see we have members of the public. And I'm going to open this up to the members of the public to ask questions of either their professional or even our engineer to clarify some issues. Come on up.
Questions or comments?
Questions now. Comments are last. I mean, questions usually, and then once we conclude, we have comments.
I stand, very good.
Okay. You sure no questions? Okay. I'm going to close it to the public as far as questions. Is there any other witnesses you have?
No.
Okay. Are there any other issues that we haven't discussed?
I believe we touched on anything. I just did want to state that due to the fact that they've decreased the scope of the project largely by removing that walkway, it does not trigger any of the grading permit requirements, stormwater management requirements because of the size of the project. Anything under 400 square feet is exempt from that. And this falls 162 feet, so it's very, you know, de minimis.
Well, that's a good thing to know. Thank you. Because it's not digging up more than that much area, okay.
So your item eight on page two, not required anymore, correct?
Correct. Eight and nine, both not required.
Eight and nine, thank you. Yep.
Great. That's always good to know. And just-
As well as seven as well, Steve.
As well as seven, okay.
Oh, not the walkway, so when the walkway has been removed. So we've largely taken care of a lot of those.
And we've answered all the rest of them, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just to confirm, the, these photographs that were taken, the, is this, the one with the flag, is that the front of your house?
Yes.
Okay. That actually is the front?
Yes.
Okay. So that's going to drastically be improved by your drawings here, I see.
Yes.
So the door is going to be facing forward and not sideways?
Correct.
Okay. So that's going to get all cleaned up and beautified according to plans? And the reason, the hardship that you have is because of the size of the house?
Yes.
And the nonusability of only having the three bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, I'm sorry. Two bedrooms, either.
Three girls and one bedroom.
Three girls and one bedroom.
Yes.
Okay. That is a hardship.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I take it also the lot area, lot width, and the through lot aspect of the creating two front yards?
I think it was out of my mouth.
Thank you.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Well, we, speakers one. The, those are also, I would take it from the planner, hardship arguments for a C1 basis for some, if not all, of the relief sought?
That's correct.
Talking to the mic, so we can hear you.
It was a very leading question. The least you could do is answer in the affirmative in the mic.
Yes, yeah, no, there's many, several issues on this lot that makes it very hard to comply, you know.
Right. The size, the shape, right.
Yeah, the undersized lot, the width of the lot, you know, and-
The shape of the grading of the lot, yeah.
The location of the house on the lot, you know, the topography, everything.
A lot of things in this town were built before, built for any concern with steep slopes or anything like that. They put the house anywhere they felt like after time.
That's it. Well, it seems to be the level, the only level, truly level area, yeah, so, yeah.
How long have you had the house? Have you, there? Twelve years?
Twelve years.
Twelve years, okay. You picked the time to fix it when the height of all the expensive wood and everything. It's good talking.
It's my luck.
And it raised your property value the most too, right now, though, so.
But, oh, have you, one thing, in the neighborhood that you live in, the neighbors around you within 50, 20 feet, 50 feet, 100 feet, have there been any improvements in the houses or any changes in the houses?
In the neighborhood?
Yeah, in your neighborhood.
Two houses up. It's, I don't know if it's been, well, the people just moved in, 114?
Yeah, they had an addition.
The addition closer.
Okay. Yeah, I think I remember that. But, so there has been other people on the street that have added to their house and upgraded their housing because of the nature of the older type houses that are there?
Correct.
How old is this house, do you know? When was it built?
1940.
Okay, so it is, it predates a lot of things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it have electricity?
I had an outhouse when it was built, though. That's good, okay. So it, this, what you're proposing here, I take it would not be out of character with the neighborhood?
No, blood right in.
Okay. There are other two-story houses in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Would it be fair to say that what you have now really doesn't fit into the neighborhood?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions by the board members of the applicant or their expert?
Well, was there any floor area ratio stuff that?
Yeah, that was, they fall within that. If you look at the chart, that was, they're okay with that. The floor area ratio was right on the chart here.
Okay.
Yeah. They're allowed 35, and they only down, they got 30, 3,058. They're well within there.
So it's a 1,400 square foot house now?
Yes.
How much is it going to be?
We're adding another 15.
About 3,000, about 3,000 total, yeah.
Double your pleasure. Great.
I'll never see the kids again.
Hey.
They'll be hiding in their room.
You got lost in your own house, there you go. Now, are there any questions by the public of the, before we get to comments, are there any questions by the public of the applicant about this application? No? Okay. Being that there's no questions, I'm going to open it up to comments from the public. And I see a gentleman getting up. Now, before you get here, we need your full name, your address, and that's basically your full name. Spell your last name and your address.
Good evening. Paul White, 25 Darty Avenue, Gillette, New Jersey. And my last name spelling is W-H-I-T-E.
Right. That wouldn't have to be though, so.
Right, no, there's some ways of spelling a few things. Look at the words, the last name Smith, there's like five different ways of spelling it. Anyhow, I would hope the board would streamline this as best they can for this couple in that area. Some people call it the Homestead Park area, Gillette area, whatever. There is a lot of older homes, a lot of them are outdated, and your house is outdated. I'm warning you today, actually, hopefully, the board will pass this completely with no, nobody saying no or giving them a hard time. It's at that time in this neighborhood where you actually have a lot of older, by the way, I lived there since 1993, a long time, on Darty Avenue. And the older couples are kind of like-
Moving, yeah.
That's a good way of saying it. One way or another, they're moving. And the houses-
Voluntary and voluntary.
The houses in this neighborhood, a lot of them do need updating. And I can go back as far as the 90s, you know, you didn't have too good a reputation for kind of getting permits and doing things here because of building inspectors you had, things like that. Luckily, she's moved on. You know, a lot of people were hesitant to even do repairs, the older people. Hopefully, you can streamline this and make it easier so other people in the neighborhood that are moving in, which we have a lot of people moving in, and we have a forum and stuff like that, we have people, "Oh, don't even think about putting an addition on. Look what this couple's going through." You know. This is what people don't want to hear.
I understand.
That I live here a long time. I want people to fix their houses and feel free to do it and come in and not have to be held up for two years to get a lock rating plan for some engineer who ends up changing everything and they still have flooding in the basement. So with that said, most of the neighborhood I'm in contact with, and a lot of people are aware of this, and we're fully, we're fully for them building-
Thank you.
Their addition on.
Thank you.
And I wish them the best, and I hope the board sees it too, you know, you vote yes for this.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you, have a good day.
We very seldom hear positive comments, but thank you. Is anyone else in the public? Come on up.
Good evening.
Well, wait till you get closer before you tell us your name, so it's in the mic.
Good evening. Robert Sawchuck and my wife, Agnes Sawchuck.
Spell your last name. Okay. And your address?
49 Preston Drive.
Okay.
I live right across the street from-
Okay, talk into the mic.
Sorry, you know what? And I forgot to swear Mr. White in, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Mr. White, if you could raise your right hand, you don't have to come all the way up. And Mr. Sawchuck, if you could do the same?
Raise your hand.
Do both of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth?
Or have given.
And nothing but the truth, as well as what you've already given. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do. I do.
Thank you both. Mr. Sawchuck?
Thank you. I would just like to second what Mr. White has said tonight, that Mr. and Mrs. Hart receive your vote to have them go through the construction and let them stay there as long as they need to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The board strives to make neighborhoods look better and beautify the township. And one of the ways of doing that is to allow people that have older houses to make them better. And we understand the constraints of the properties that people have, and especially in Gillette with the hills and the steep slopes, so.
It's a beautiful area.
It is. It's a beautiful area, but it's very hilly and the layout of a lot of the property doesn't allow for a lot of expansion because of that. So we understand that. And we've had many people from that area come and add garages, add different things at their houses. And it's something that the board keeps in mind to balance the look of the neighborhood and the beautification of the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Okay.
But we have-
One more.
Yes, I'm sorry, come on up.
Hi, everyone. My name is Omar Baig. I'm a resident-
Before you-
And, I'm sorry, spell your last name.
Last name is Baig, B-A-I-G.
Okay.
B-A-I-G.
And I'm a resident of 101 Preston Drive, right across their house.
Now you can get sworn in.
All right.
What number, Preston?
101 Preston Drive.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right hand, please? If you may raise it?
Yep.
Do you swear to God or affirm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm in total favor of this. My daughters are kind of the same age as Anna's and Andrew's younger daughter, so I don't want them to leave the neighborhood, just stay in the neighborhood and bringing up the girls, you know, and together, family events and stuff. Looking forward to that. Good luck.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Boy, that, it's very unusual. Usually we always get negative comments, but I'm glad to hear it.
Good neighbors. Yes.
Yeah, right. More than the Twilight Zone. But I very appreciate the neighbors coming out and supporting it. It shows you that the neighbors are, you know, are mindful of the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Okay, hearing no other, no other comments from the public? Okay. I'm going to close it to the public. And being that there are no other questions or comments from the board, we can start our deliberation. Gary, would you like to start?
Sure. I think the plan that you presented to us is making use of the only area you can really build on. And I think it's great that you've got the neighbors out, you know, kind of supporting this. And I'll be in favor of this when it goes to vote. This seems like something that had to be done.
Tom?
Well, I want to thank the neighbors for coming out, because it usually, it means that everybody's angry and they don't want somebody else to have anything. And in this case, you were able to, Mr. and Mrs. Hart, to drag out three of your neighbors. One is rare. Three is wonderful, which shows what kind of good people you are. So I've looked at your application. It's going to be a nicer looking home.[1442.83] So I'm, I've looked at your application, it's going to be a nicer-looking home, it's going to accommodate your family in a much more reasonable way. It'll have electricity. Others in your area have also enhanced their homes, so it'll make it better for all. You have a tight lot, but you have, but what you're proposing helps alleviate that in some places, and it's really not a negative to, to say that we should not approve this. And I am also the resident of Homestead Park, so I will be in favor of approving this.
Ben?
I'm in favor of the application as well, I think it meets the criteria for a C1 variance in that there's clearly undue hardship due to the size of the lot and the, you know, the two front yards, and I think that the, you know, adding the square footage to have it a more, you know, modern-sized home is going to be good for the local housing stock, and it'll make the neighborhood look nice, and so I'm for it.
Jessica?
So I'm also for the application, I think you, through your expert and through your own testimony, and quite frankly, through your neighbor's testimony, have met both the C1 and C2, I don't see any detriment to this, I see only a benefit, and I'm for the application, thank you.
I concur with my board members, I think you put on a very good application, and mine for you doing it yourself without an attorney, which is good, and your expert was excellent, he, his plans were nicely drawn up, and he explained it to everyone, he, you were flexible enough to, you know, concur with our expert as far as getting rid of the walkway, reducing your lot coverage. The only way to go was up anyway, so I think the house is going to be a lot nicer-looking, it's going to actually improve the neighborhood, make the rest of the neighborhood look better. Hopefully, it'll encourage more of the people that have bought some of these houses to do this, do a similar type of thing, so I would be in favor of it.
Thank you.
Would you like to read something?
If I, and Samantha, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I have the variances as being impervious coverage proposed 29.51 percent versus 20 percent maximum permitted.
Correct.
Front yard setback on the north side, 19.62 feet versus 30 feet minimum required, and setback from critical area, that being the steep slopes, proposed 19 feet, four inches versus 50 feet minimum required. Those are the three bulk variances, and the conditions stipulated too are all those set forth in Ms. Nello's memo, exclusive of seven, eight, and nine, and I believe that is it, and since they are all bulk variances that would require, we have five, three out of five worth of passage.
Do I hear motion to move the resolution?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Lindemann?
Yes.
Mr. Genakis?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Chairman, correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was quick in your thought, right?